Twenty twenty, I call this meeting to order. And again, please ask the clerk to call the entire roll.
Trust camera.
Here.
Carbonaro.
Here.
Danny.
Yes, here.
Cabrana, absent. Hopkins.
Here.
Ranky.
Present.
President Wallace.
Here. First item on our, we did the whole meeting, see is under building and zoning. Chairman Hopkins.
Thank you, President Wallace. We have one item under building and zoning tonight, and that is the List Trucking site, the PUD plan and special use permit. And tonight, we are going to discuss the petitioner's request and decide whether we're going to forward it to the Plan Commission for further review and to conduct a public hearing. With that, would you give us a quick rundown on this?
Sure. So, the petitioner is requesting a site PUD plan amendment, and it's for an existing building and storage yards located along the north side of Graham Street, just east of Route 25 on our far west corporate limits. And List Trucking is purchasing this entire five-acre site. They would be locating on the eastern portion here, which is formerly the Acton Mobile Site. And this petition also includes the two-acre existing storage yard to the west. So, this site. List Trucking would be utilizing the site for its car transport business. They deliver new and used vehicles to all forty-eight contiguous states. And they own ten car carriers and also utilize contractors to transport their vehicles. Cars would be stored on a temporary basis on the site and typically no more, for no more than two days. Got the site plan here. So, here is the site plan. The parking for the trucks, the gate entrance here off of Graham Street, and the existing buildings on the site. And then, the western half of the property would be, would remain as the storage yard for Benchmark. They are also requesting a special use amendment to allow for the storage of car carriers and passenger vehicles. Since the Acton Mobile Site was very specific in their PUD, they only allowed for mobile office trailers, storage trailers, and portable classrooms to be stored on the site. The petitioners are here tonight, as well as List Trucking and Dean Kelly, and they can answer any further questions.
Is there any questions by the board? I think it'll clean it up a little bit, right?
Yes, we're going to work with them on that, yes.
Good. Any improvements to that site, I think it'd be great.
So, we'll forward this on to the Plan Commission and get it out to public hearing. And then, we'll have it back at the board then instead of back at committee.
It's up, that's up to you.
Yep.
I think this is pretty straightforward.
Yeah, I don't know that, yeah, straight back to the board.
Okay, we can do that.
Yeah, the quicker the better, right? You guys got a timeline, or?
Do it.
Okay. All right. Thanks for being here.
Thank you. That's all we have under building and zoning tonight.
Thank you, Chairman Hopkins. Next, we have Finance and Golf Committee Chairman Danny.
President Wallace, we have the two thousand twenty dash, two thousand twenty-one proposed budget review. And I thought this budget was extremely interesting from the standpoint that when I opened up my minutes, my iPad here, it said the presentation by Todd Dowen not included. So, I guess we're not going to hear it tonight. It's not included.
Okay, let's adjourn.
It's because I told him to keep it under three minutes. We can all read.
Twenty-five words or less.
Yeah, run while you can, right?
Hey, good luck with your celebration.
Yes, very much.
Yep.
Thank you, I'm not offended.
All right.
Welcome, this is the overview presentation of the proposed budget for the twenty twenty-one year. So, we've been working on this for a while. Again, this will, all these details will be sent out Friday is our goal date for sending all the details to you guys with all the numbers, the budget message, and everything that you can pour over. And then, the next two weeks, the next two meetings in March is when we'll review the departments and go on from there. So, and then, eventually, it needs to be approved before the fiscal year starts in May.
So, this is going to be a thirty-thousand-foot view?
Yes.
Kind of a briefing on?
Yes.
Okay, good.
We're going to get into some of the details on the revenue, but...
Couple of weeks, right?
Well, this is kind of the revenue night, but then, we'll, I'll start moving it along here. Got a slow start here, but I'll pick it up.
That's the whole point.
Thank you, Ray. All right, again, it's more than just numbers. The strategic plan is in here, policy, financial policies are in here, our debt service policy. It's also a financial plan. It's kind of an operations guide. So, we get approval, and then, we move forward on not just the capital things, but also for the departments and their objectives. And it also has a lot of other data and details involved. So, our budget calendar, we've got a lot going on. We've got the capital budget, the strategic plan, we have their operating budget reviews, department reviews. We're getting here to February, we're, and March then where we get into detail, and then, in April, it is when it needs to be passed. As far as where the money comes through, we have just under sixty-nine million dollars is the total budget. You can see on the, on the pie here, property tax make up sixteen percent of that. Other taxes, that includes income tax, sales tax, real estate transfer tax, TIF taxes, charges for services is water, sewer, golf, parking, then you've got your interest income, borrowings, and other revenues, which include license permits, franchise fees, miscellaneous income. Our expenditures, seventy-two million, three hundred and sixty-six thousand. This is broken out by category of public works. We've got corridors, your capital projects, public works, public safety, they're all about twenty-five percent, twenty-two, twenty-nine percent. And then, debt service, golf, general government make up the last. So, we have operating and capital. The gray is the operating. Operating expenses are around fifty-one million this year. Capital goes up and down depending on the projects. We had a lot of water projects, the police station, that's why we had the spike in the capital. We're down to twenty-one million. That includes the fifteen million in the capital improvement plan, plus some debt service on the, on the TIF. As far as revenue, it is down slightly from last year. Some of that is due to, we had some grant revenue in the MFT, and then, loans for water projects. This is by fund. So, general fund is thirty-three percent of the revenue. Special revenue is the, is the MFT fund, debt service, capital projects, that includes TIF taxes. Enterprise funds are water, sewer, golf, and then, trust and agency is our police pension fund and our special, Bluff City Special Service Area. So, we're going to get in a little bit of the detail. I did look up the LGDF. That is the, there is a bill that said reduce income taxes by twenty-five percent, and the other use taxes and things like that by twenty percent. They haven't sent out a lot on that, so I don't believe that there's a strong chance of that going through. Twenty-five percent reduction to the income tax would be, would be quite a bit for most towns to take that hit. But anyway, property taxes, sixteen percent of the total, that's thirty-five percent of the general fund. That does include our general corporate tax, which is proposed to be level at six and a half million, police pension levy, and, and also our debt service levy. So, again, our total share of property taxes, we sometimes, residents feel like all the property taxes are from the village, but really, ten percent is from the village. Here's our tax rate history. Our tax rate history kind of goes up and down with the, with the EAV. You can see Cook County on the blue there, where it goes up, and then, it has this three-year assessment, comes back, back down. Our equalized assessed value is slowly creeping up. It did spike. The year that was the highest is actually off the chart, it was two thousand nine. And we're still actually ten percent down from the highest level of EAV back in two thousand nine. Other taxes, the biggest is the income tax that's budgeted for four million, three hundred and twenty-five thousand. That's eighteen percent of the general fund. The budget is up one hundred and seventy-five thousand from last year. Compared to what we're actually receiving, it's just up two percent. The IML is actually projecting that it's going to be down to one hundred and five dollars per capita. So, you take our forty-one thousand, two hundred and eight times one hundred and five dollars per capita, that's where we get our estimated income tax. Estimated for this prior year, one hundred and seven dollars per thousand. So, we're going to be down, the IML estimate is about eighty thousand. Again, so out of the forty-four point nine-five percent of state taxes that we pay, the village gets about six percent of it. Sales tax budgeting two and a half million. That's up one hundred and fifteen thousand compared to last year's budget. Actual estimate for this coming year, two million, five hundred and twenty-two thousand. So, this increase is just a two percent increase of what we're actually expecting to receive. Again, Cook County tax rate is ten percent, DuPage County tax rate is eight percent are combined. We have one sales tax rebate agreement, and that's with Ace Hardware. Home rule sales tax, expecting that to be almost two million dollars. That's eight percent of our general fund, three hundred and ninety thousand dollar increase to the budget. Actual estimate for this coming year, one million, seven hundred and sixty thousand. There are changes coming to the way use tax is collected and sales tax. In January of twenty twenty-one, some of the online taxes right now that are distributed as use tax on a per capita basis, they're actually going to change, and they're going to start collecting home rule sales tax on online taxes. And so, I have increased the home rule sales tax fifty thousand a month for those last four months, beginning of twenty twenty-one. So, that, that will be interesting to see how that all works out. They're going to be taxing the online sales tax to where the item is shipped, not to where it's, not like a use tax. So, we should be, they should be able to collect home rule sales tax on that. Again, local use tax, that is our, that's it, is how they distribute the online taxes right now. It's just on a per capita basis, so it doesn't matter who sells it, who, who gets it. So, that's going to change. Right now, the IML's latest estimate is thirty-five dollars and fifty cents per capita. So, it all started increasing way back in two thousand and fifteen with, with Amazon. Here's our tax that is sinking quickly. The telecommunications tax is budgeted five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, a two hundred thousand dollar decrease from last year. It looked like the slide had, was slowing down, but then, it picked up again this last year. So, it is going down fast. We do have a six percent tax on telephones. The state has a seven percent tax on that, so the total's thirteen percent. Back in two thousand and eleven, we collected more than one million, four hundred thousand dollars on telecommunications taxes. So, that's how, it's almost down to a million dollars. Real estate transfer tax is budgeted eight hundred thousand dollars again, or that's, that's up fifty thousand dollars. Commercial property sales, we had three large commercial sales, and the total between those three sales was two hundred and five thousand dollars. So, without, without those, we would be down the six hundred thousand dollar range. It's hard to say how many more sales we will have. One of those commercial properties sold twice, so they paid fifty thousand dollars twice during the, during the one year. Our gaming tax is budgeted two hundred and fifty thousand. That's up thirty-five thousand from last year's budget. This year's estimate is two hundred and forty thousand dollars for gaming tax. That is used for funding our BETA program. Permits, budgeted six hundred thousand dollars. Now, that, that is the same, that is the same as last year. Residential permits, we had, we're estimating that we're going to have eighteen permits this year. We're budgeting seventeen permits next year. The average permit fee for a new home is two to three thousand dollars, and then, there's developer deposits, fees, donations on top of that. Commercial industrial permits, we have been using those as economic development tool, and we have been waiving those fees so that, we might have some large commercial development in the area, but we have been using, using that, and that, so we are showing that as revenue. A big example of that is the project Oak, even their permit fees. We're expecting two thousand nine hundred permits this next, individual miscellaneous permits next, this next year. All right, getting into the enterprise funds. Water sales, we're proposing not to make a change to the rate this year. That would keep the revenue at about twelve million dollars. This is based on consumption. Consumption's been relatively flat. As you can see, we had a lot of use back in twenty twelve, thirteen. Since then, I think that was one of the last major, last, in a long time that we've had a drought, lots of watering. And the revenue, as we've started to raise it, has just about doubled, tax rates, the water rates have gone up about eighty-five percent since we started raising them back in three years ago. Current rate is eleven dollars and seventy-six cents per thousand. Sewer sales, we are projecting to continue with the three-year rate increase on the sewer. That would generate seven million, two hundred and five thousand dollars in revenue. That is a one-point-one million dollar increase over last year, or about eighteen and a half percent. Again, it's based on the three-year rate increase plan, that would be the third of the three years. We are accumulating cash in our sewer fund. We won't be starting to pay the wastewater treatment plant IEPA loans until the summer of two thousand and twenty-three. At that time, then, we will be a little bit short on the, on the revenue if, if it's, if the costs come in as projected right now. We do start paying on the Divine Avenue excess flow bonds this, this June. Currently, the, for six thousand gallons, Cook County would be twenty-eight dollars and fifty cents a month for sewer service. DuPage fifty-one, thirty-four. Kane County, twenty dollars and fifty-eight cents would be a typical bill for sewer on six thousand gallons. And we're, we're going to be reviewing water rates and sewer rates in detail the second meeting in March when we go over the public works as part of the public works fund. So, there'll be more details coming out on that as far as comparative, where we are with neighboring communities. Service charges for golf, budgeted one million, one hundred and thirty-seven thousand. That's a sixty-nine thousand dollar decrease from last year, about six percent. We're reducing rounds to thirty-one thousand. I think we were, we budgeted thirty-two thousand last year. I think we were coming in at about twenty-nine thousand dollars for actual, twenty-nine thousand for actual rounds. We're based on, basing a slight increase in the revenue over the actual on better weather. I don't think we can have worse weather for the last two years, so we're, we're playing the odds on, on that one. Food and beverage is beverage, is budgeted just over a million dollars. That's a thirty-three thousand dollar increase. Actual revenue projected, nine hundred and fifty-nine thousand, and this reflects bookings and, and interest in the, in the banquet facility. I forgot to mention that on the golf program side, we are proposing to raise the fees for, for golf, and we're also planning to raise the fees for food and beverage and the banquet services. Moving on to overview of the expenditures then. Again, operating expenditures, fifty-one million. Broken down by type, personnel again makes up forty-nine percent of the, of our expenditures. Contractual services, that includes the water that we're buying from the DuPage Water Commission. Commodities, other, other charges includes debt service and liability insurance, and then, our capital outlay is for machinery equipment. So, by department, golf, four percent, debt service, six, public works, public safety, general government, seventeen percent. So, in the general fund, we're going to start estimating that we'll start with cash balance, eleven million, seven hundred thousand. Budgeted revenues, twenty-three million, five hundred and ninety. That's up four percent from the prior year. Expenditures, twenty-one million, nine hundred and ninety-one. That's up six percent. That transfers out, that's mostly for police pension, central services. And our end balance, ten million, six hundred and fifty. Again, central services transfer, one million, five thousand. Vehicle replacement, five hundred and sixteen thousand a year out of the general fund. Our transfer, police pension fund, one, one and a half million. And then, in, transfers in include from MFT and the water sewer parking golf funds, five hundred and ninety-three thousand. We are budgeting, included in that is three new police officers and one accountant. Central services again, that makes up our information technology and GIS departments. Our estimated balance is three hundred and sixty-nine thousand. Annual transfers are one million, three hundred thousand. And our proposed budget is just, just under that, one million, three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, so we'll, we'll end up with one hundred and twenty-four thousand in the bank. Operating expenses, one million, two hundred and ninety-nine. So, we're only spending about thirty thousand dollars on equipment this year. So, it's, it's an off year as far as, sorry, it's an off year as far as there isn't a, the desktop replacement program. That's where we pay for the laptops that are in the squad cars and other copy machines, things like that. So, it's a real low year. Usually, we're around a hundred and fifty thousand at least. A couple of years ago, we replaced the telephone system. There isn't anything like that coming out of the central services this year. Vehicle replacement is where we pre-fund, and then, we pay for the vehicles. Our beginning balance is one million, one hundred and thirty-five thousand. Again, our transfers, five hundred and ninety-three. Our proposed budget is four hundred and sixty-six thousand, so we should end up with a little over one million, three thousand. Estimated coming through this year, this current year, eight hundred and ninety-three thousand. So, what's budgeted is five vehicles, two lawnmowers, and one leaf vacuum sweeper. We still have five vehicles on order. Two of those are squad cars. It takes, it's been taking a long time to get squad cars in and some, and the big plow trucks. We've got two plow trucks that are listed here, they're a hundred and fifty thousand each. Those take almost a year, most a year to get in. So, the squad cars, so when they, the cars might not look like they're ready to go yet, but by the time they get replaced, they're, they're ready to go. So, the snapshot or in a nutshell here, we're, no new taxes or fees. We're not talking about raising any taxes this year. The general property tax levy is flat. Included in this is a non-union wage increase of two and a half percent. Again, four employees, this is three police officers and accountant. We talked briefly about the final sewer rate increase of the three-year plan, and then, this also includes the fifteen million dollars, the capital improvement plan that was approved back in December. Quickly, to look at the, the fund balance projections then. As you can see, the, we're projecting to start the year in the general fund, eleven point seven million, which is going to, which is above our policy range. After this budget year, the twenty twenty-one year, we would be right at the top of the range, about ten million dollars in cash. And if we projected, kept going forward, we would slowly work down into the middle of the range. The water fund balance, we're just about in the, we're going to end up towards the top of the range, not over the top of the range, at three point three million. We do have a couple of big projects that haven't been bid out yet. We're waiting to see where they come in at as far as the Sterns Row Pump Station, it's a million-dollar project, and it's what's been budgeted, and so, we will see where that comes at. But we will definitely need to be looking at raising water rates for the twenty-one, twenty-two year as we start to fall behind and continue to make the payments on the, the IEPA loans, I mean, the DuPage Water Commission loans. We are putting off one water tower painting this year as we're looking at exactly what we need to do with, with the water tower. Sewer fund, again, I talked about we're building up cash in the sewer fund. Our expenses are relatively lower in the sewer fund, so cash balance of two point three nine million is outside of the policy of thirty-five percent operating. But as we move forward, we're proposing to use that extra money that's being built up as we get ready to pay back the water treatment plant loans on increasing the rehabilitation program. So, we've built in to increase it from six hundred thousand to eight hundred thousand this year, and then, one million dollars the following year after that as, as we move forward. Once we hit that wastewater treatment plant payment, latest estimates came in at over thirty million dollars, so that's going to be with the IEPA loan, about a two dollar a year loan payment. So, that would put us in a negative cash flow situation. So, that, that is it. That's the overview, quick. I know it's a lot of numbers. I'm still awake, I, I'm just barely awake myself.
I would have appreciated the slides in advance. I thought thirty slides back, there was some indication that we're projecting a one percent increase in the property taxes. I'm probably misquoting it.
There is going to be an increase in overall property taxes. It's, it's going to be from the, the police pension, and basically, it's, actually, the overall levy from the twenty nineteen levy that we just passed.
General, the general.
The general.
Right.
No, the general levy is going to be the same, stay the same. It's going to be flat, six and a half million.
Good. But the increases in the police pension and what else?
It's just going to be the police pension levy. The debt service levy is going to be about nine thousand dollars increase, but that's not going to, that's just going to be a fraction of a percent. Yeah, I, I apologize for not being able to send these out. We, we moved our overview up into February so we would have, you know, the two meetings in March to review the detail, and I will send this out with, with the budget that goes out on Friday.
Thank you. Thank you. All right.
All right.
Anything else?
I don't think so. I, I think it'd be interesting to see how we can utilize the increase in the online tax and reduce possibly, I don't know, sewer rate?
Yeah, that, that will be coming the 2021, so we've got a year to go before that, it'll be interesting to see what, what actually comes in. I know we're not, we don't have a shopping mall, so we, I'm sure we have a lot.
Possibly a revenue source that I'm hearing could be coming as something to do with 5G antenna networks. So I don't know if we've been approached by that yet or not.
We do have some, we do have quite a bit of development as far as gas stations, and those, those are good revenue generators.
Yep. Good. Thank you, Mr. Treasurer.
That's all we have, Mr. President.
All right, I'll entertain motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second? Moved by Trustee Cameron, seconded by Trustee Carbonaro. Would the clerk please call the entire roll?
Trustee Cameron?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Dany?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Frankie?
Yes.